Today is Tuesday, December 12th, 2023. I call this village board meeting in order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Bush?
Here.
Trustee Frankie?
Here.
Trustee Jerish?
Here.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Prochnow?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
All board members are present tonight. Tonight, we're gonna have, we'll do the pledge legion, but first we're gonna do the invocation from Pastor Stefan Petuznik at Christopher Victor Lutheran Church. One of them, please rise. Pastor, please.
Thank you, thank you. "The light shines in the darkness, and the darkness did not overcome it. We are in the season of light and prepare for God's coming into our world. We are grateful for this light that God provides and that led us through this past year. We are grateful for the services of the police officers and firefighters who kept us safe through the Elk Grove Care Program that provided help for all people from Elk Grove and beyond, and were seeking help, who were seeking help, through pads and our local food pantries that help people with basic needs such as shelter and food. We pray for the good work that Butch Urkey did as chairman of the Fire and Police Commission and wish him well in his retirement. We pray for the reappointing new chairman Steve Scholton, who will be sworn in today, that his time on the board will be a blessing to all. We also pray, we also lift up in prayer the work of the new Fire and Police Commissioner, Russell Gartha Jr., as he will be sworn in today as well. Bless Steve and Russell in their important positions and give them wisdom and strength in their administrative roles." Let us now listen to a meaningful Advent poem written by South African pastor Ellen Bosak. "It is not true that creation and human family are doomed to destruction and loss. This is true, for God so loved the world that He gave His only begotten Son, that whoever believes in Him shall not perish but have eternal life. It's not true that we must accept inhumanity and discrimination, hunger and poverty, death and destruction. This is true. I have come that they may have life, and that abundantly. It's not true that violence and hatred should have the last word, and that war and destruction rule forever. This is true. Unto us a child is born, unto us a son is given, and the government shall be upon his shoulder. His name shall be called Wonderful Counselor, Mighty God, the Everlasting, the Prince of Peace. It's not true that we are simply victims of the power of evil who seek to rule the world. This is true. To me is given authority in heaven and on earth, and lo, I am with you even until the end of the world. It's not true that our hopes and liberation of humankind or justice of human dignity, of peace are not met for this earth and for this history. This is true. The hour comes, and it is now, that the true worshippers shall worship God in spirit and truth. So let us now encounter Advent in hope, even hope against hope. Let us see visions of love and peace and justice. Let us affirm with humility, with joy, with faith, with courage, that God is the light and life of the world. Amen, and Merry Christmas to you all."
Amen. Thank you. The flag to my right, a pledge legion to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Pastor, thank you.
You're welcome.
And as always, if you had enough sugar at Christmas anyways, a little more won't hurt.
Thank you, thank you. Have a good evening. God bless you.
Thank you. We move on now to the pro-limits. We have two sets to approve, so we'll start off with first, November 14th, 2023.
I move that we approve the minutes of November 14th, 2023, as presented and dispensed with the reading.
Second?
We have a motion by trustee Prochnow, a second by trustee Bush. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show unanimous approval. We have now minutes from our special meeting on November 20th, 2023.
I move that we approve the minutes of November 20th, 2023, as presented and dispensed with the reading.
Second?
We have a motion by trustee Prochnow, a second by trustee Bush. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show unanimous approval. Move on now to mayor and board of trustees report. We've got some presentations where it ends and others due, so I ask you, please be patient. We'll get to those in a couple minutes. The mayor, 27 years, I don't think I've ever seen a busier four-week period in my life. A lot has gone on. I appreciate your indulgence for a few minutes to go through some things that have occurred, that are occurring, and so on, so I appreciate that and it's getting advanced. First off, on November 21st, we are able to welcome, I know trustee Schmidt and trustee Prochnow, the Sister City students.
Yes.
Great time.
Came from Termini and Mannersee to visit the village hall.
Yes.
See local government, police station, fire station, all that, and went well, and the kids were great. They had a lot of fun, I know, enjoyed that time. Also, on November 24th, we had our tree lighting ceremony out there. The weather was chilly, but what a crowd, bigger crowd, and probably was the biggest we've had, and went well, and it was exciting to kick off the holiday season with the tree lighting. And then on November 28th, we did the farewell lunch with the Sister City students, exchange students, before they left from that. Also, on November 30th, we had a SOC meeting, suburban air commission meeting. I'll be talking about the FAA lawsuit, which we announced some action on when we were off for the past four weeks from board meetings in a little bit. And then with that complete, I want to now talk a little bit about some items that have been going on, and again, I bear for your patience. A couple items you're gonna see on the agenda tonight. First off, on the agenda, the park district approached the village, went through the planning commission board approval. They're making change at the park at Marshall Park. Marshall Park's the one that's on Chelmsford, used to be the old township daycare center. And they're redoing it over with Fountain Square Park area, soccer's being updated, pickleball courts, new playground equipment, fitness area. One thing that I'm not sure if they decided after the fact, or they forgot to include whatever, they now wanna light the soccer field and the pickleball courts. Again, that's gotta go through the plant commission, then go through the board. But again, anyone that's got questions, comments, ideas about it, that is something that's the park district function, not a village board function. If you got concerns, reach out to them. I can assure you, with today's lights for sports areas, they can put covers on, they can drain the light onto the field, not on the homes behind, or the areas behind, but if you got any questions, reach out to the park district, talk to them. But again, it'll be the newest lights, the most efficient ways to prevent overspill into people's homes and property, and I know they've already shown me the lights will be off, I think, by nine or 10 o'clock at night. So, but again, that's gonna be coming up, it's on the agenda, put before, and that'll be going then. Another thing we just completed is we spent almost six years updating our ordinances, and that'll be coming for approval. People say, wow, six years. Well, one, we had COVID during the time, but secondly, our ordinance is still in terminology, I haven't heard the terms, in 50 years. So we updated them, made some modifications, changed, they've gone through the plant commission, zoning board, through the board, been working on this at length, and again, tonight, they're ready to be completed. It's our entire, I think our entire ordinance. Am I right?
Zoning code.
Zoning code. So it's all updated, all the way it should be, and I commend staff and everyone for working on it, and we're glad that's now complete. Another thing the board has been talking about, and we're excited to discuss tonight with the community, as we've talked about before, this village has been doing well. Business parks doing well, our community's doing well, and all that. And remember, we've given back $400 water bill rebates, we gave back gift cards back and stuff, and we like doing that, and who knows what may happen in the future. But one thing we are focused on, and we're now targeting, we have two ways we pay our debt. You know, debt when you build buildings, additions, new facilities, all that. One is paid for on property taxes, one is paid through our electric tax. The one on our property tax debt, we're gonna accelerate paying that off. We're gonna knock off between seven to 10 years on that debt. So our goal is by 2030, there'll no longer be any property tax debt on our property tax bill. We're gonna work to get that paid off, we're working to accelerate that. So again, we're looking to knock off anywhere from seven to 10 years, taking some of the excess revenue coming in to do that, which we now think is a good idea. Everyone can't wait till they get a mortgage-free home, we're looking at a mortgage-free community. So we're excited to announce, we're working on that, and that should be coming in the near future. Another thing on the agenda, Elk Grove's looking to buy three more parcels of property. As people may or may not remember, the Bank of Elk Grove, the Elk Grove Village Bank and Trust Building on Turner, we bought back in the summer, bought that. Tonight, we are entering contracts to buy the old Berkshire Hathaway building, and they're now as munchies pizza, and the McSerris salon, and a liquor store, and we're looking to buy two other smaller buildings across the street from that, 60 and 70 Turner. And so we're entering contracts to purchase those properties. I know everyone's gonna say, what are you gonna do, what's gonna happen? Nothing right now. But when property comes available, and comes available, and we think it could be beneficial for the community long-term, we've been taking advantage of doing that. So no different than what we did up at Elk Grove, Arrentines Road and Higgins, no different than we did in the Endosia Park, a couple buildings on Higgins recently, and stuff. So we're doing that, so that's on the agenda tonight, we'll be approving that in a little bit. We talked for a quick second there about the SOC meeting, FAA. While we were gone, real quick refresher, back on October 9th, we had a press conference here announcing a lawsuit against the Federal Aviation Administration, the FAA. And the reason for the lawsuit was, right now, for the, since 2015, Maggie, past seven years, eight years, we've been working, ONCC, Chicago Department of Aviation, and communities around the airport have been working on what they call a fly-quiet program. And again, the airport's expanded, we have new runways, anyone who lives along Beasterfield knows, they got flights they never had before, all that. During the day, there's nothing we can really do. But at nighttime, we can try to get a rotation plan where they use only certain runways on certain weeks and rotate them around to spread the noise around. We always say, everyone gets the benefit of the airport, everyone needs to share in the burden of the airport. So that's been going on for a long time. To our dismay, the hope was that the ONCC, O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission, would submit the two best alternatives for the nighttime rotation. Plan B is in Boyd, Plan H is in Harry. We know through the JDA, the aviation experts we've been using for years, that Plan H is the fairest distribution of flights around O'Hare. We know it. It's been modeled, it's been analyzed, been studied, it's actually almost been proven. We hoped they would submit both. Plan B was promoted mostly by communities like Park Ridge and Elmhurst. They promoted that because they have far less flights with that over the community. We feel that's not fair. Everyone should get the same benefit, everyone gets the same burden, as we said before. So ONCC was submitting only Plan B. Well, NEPA law, which is the federal law that the airport and the FAA have to follow on this kind of program, requires that all reasonable plans must be submitted in a fair and open public process. They were not doing that. They were not following NEPA, they were gonna let all fair alternatives be reviewed, and they weren't gonna have an open public process. We filed suit on Monday, October 9th. Now, people wonder, well, what kind of case did we have, was it strong, was it good? Forty-eight hours later, the Department of Justice, which handles federal lawsuits for the FAA, the Department of Justice contacted our attorney and said, can we come to a resolution on this? In other words, they said, we can't defend the FAA. We're right. We're right. I've been the mayor for 27 years. As you know, with the airport issues in the past, other issues, I have never, ever, ever seen a response in 48 hours on anything, more importantly, dealing with the federal government. They had the DOJ to reach out to us, said, basically, you win Elk Grove, let's resolve it, was unbelievable. So for the past several weeks, put together the language, wording, and all that, and they finally submitted to us, the wording where, one, they will follow NEPA, two, they will let all reasonable alternatives be considered and studied, and three, it'll be an open process. Everything we asked for, we got. Now we feel very comfortable, because again, this fly-quiet rotation is for nighttime relief. When they pass whatever they pass, we're gonna live with that for the next 30 to 40 years. I'll be dead, most of us will be dead, except the young people, will be long gone before they ever look at doing a new rotation plan. This is our quality of life we're talking about, nighttime, get some reprieve. We're very excited. Now, we know which way they should go, they know which way they should go. We're gonna watch it, watch their analysis, watch the public comment, watch it come back with. Our hope is they do the right thing, if not, we're not afraid to go back again. But we think they will, we're very excited about that, we're very happy about this. Again, politics have got to stay out of this. We're talking about people's quality of life. So that's what happened, that's why we dropped the lawsuit so quick, but we drop it without prejudice. Without prejudice, what the lawyer tells me that means is, we can reinstitute the lawsuit like that if we need to, and if we need to, we will, but we're optimistic, after DOJ said to us, we're solid, that we should be in good shape. Next, real good news. Arrentines Road and Higgins Development, I mentioned briefly before, we now have agreements, or actually, the developer, Wingspan, now has agreements with all the tenants to stay and operate in the new locations. So VV Nails, Vinnie's, Seven Mile Cycle, Tensuki, Jerish Bakery, Subway, all gonna be part of the new development. What does that mean? That means in January, we can adopt the RDA, the redevelopment agreement with Wingspan. They can start construction this spring, done hopefully by fall of '25, then they'll start the housing component construction after that. So the businesses you were hoping to keep there, stay there, they're all staying there. Also, we'll be hopefully announcing and showing in January, the new bridge. Our hope is in January, we'll be able to show the new pedestrian bridge going over Arrentines Road by the new development. It's been submitted to plans to Forest Reserve, discussion going on, so we're optimistic about that. Remember, one of the things we promised was another crossover for people to safely get to Bussey Woods Path. That's been put together, submitted to the Forest Reserve, and hopefully we'll be showing that to the public come next month, and keep our fingers crossed on that. Next, as we mentioned, we passed the minutes from the November 20th special board meeting. That was the new ordinance passed by the village to deal with migrants coming to our community. Again, real quickly, as people know, back in September of '22, so migrants are basically being bused from the city of Chicago to Elk Grove, the old La Quinta Hotel site that is no longer there, and they're coming to Elk Grove. Again, we were not given heads up, we were told, I think, about two and a half hours before they were gonna come, and we had a lot of number of questions, you know, about who's taken care of, how many, where, how long, all that. Finally, kind of worked through that, but we always had a concern, you know, the migrants that came to Elk Grove back then, except for one woman that was pregnant and one child, were all men between the ages of 18 and 20, or 35. And one of our concerns were, you have young men like that in a little hotel room, month after month, they're gonna become squirrely, that's life, and all that. We were hopeful that they could get jobs. Matter of fact, we had companies lined up, they're gonna put tables up in the hotel lobby and give them jobs. Many of these companies have people who spoke Spanish, so we can overcome the language barrier and do all that. That was not allowed by the federal government. And when I speak about the federal government here, let me say this, anyone reading the paper lately saw what Rosemont's done, Cicero's done, Schaumburg's done, towns all around here. This issue is not something villages should be solving. This is not our responsibility. This is not something we even can fathom out, put together, to resolve. But because the federal government cannot do their job, it's being pushed further and further down, now you got local towns like Elk Grove Village, Cicero, Rosemont, 3,500 people, we're solving federal problems in our local communities. It's not right. It's not right for the communities, it's not right for the migrants. It's not right. And now we're stepping up, having to do this, and we are, unfortunately, but because of our experience, and back in the last fall when they came, what we said happened, started to occur. We started having some arrests of our migrants out of our hotel for selling drugs, by other communities were arresting them. We had migrants that were so bad that the people taking care of them, they were just throwing them out of the hotel on the corner, our police had to go, give them money to get on bus or train, go down to another shelter. That's not right. Because of that going on, and people seeing in the paper, like Mayor Johnson of Chicago buying empty factories or warehouses to try to house them there and stuff, we started getting a little nervous about what may be coming in our direction. So Mr. Knickerbocker, who did a phenomenal job, for the past several months, has been working on putting together some kind of plan to make sure we protect the health, safety, and welfare for this community. And one of the last straws that broke the camel's back to make us really get this going fast and done, was when you had Venezuelans who traveled thousands of miles to get here, on foot, most of them, begging Chicago to send them back to Venezuela. You wanna talk about a slap in the face to the city of Chicago, they left one of the most oppressive countries in the world, that people you can see want to get out of, they want to go back to that country, that's how bad Chicago was. If that doesn't send up a message to everybody, nothing will. So with that said, Mr. Knickerbocker, along with some constitutional law experts, put together the ordinance to make sure we can protect our community. And what they did was, is kind of a two-step approach. One, any vacant building, factory, warehouse, storefront, anything in the village, cannot be turned temporarily into a housing shelter. It's gotta beat the codes for bathrooms, sleeping accommodation, all that, pretty much almost impossible to do, almost like creating a hotel in there, no one's gonna invest that kind of money, do all of that. One, again, to help protect the health, safety, welfare for this community, and two, the migrants. Look what they tried to do to them down in Chicago. You and I could not go live on that lot of land because of the pollution, contamination of that ground, but they're willing to put the migrants on there to live. Thank God, courts or someone stepped up and said, you can't do that. So I mean, it's to protect everyone involved here and stuff. We don't wanna go through things like that, so we've got that on the buildings that we can now enforce. The second thing is on our hotels and motels. If they come, anyone comes from out of this country, in the last 60 days, they would have, they have to receive from an infectious disease medical specialist, a certificate that they have no contagious diseases. One of the reasons we brought this up was, in the news about two months ago, they talked how some of these migrants had tuberculosis. That's not a good thing. We wanna make sure for the health, safety, welfare for this community, those kind of situations didn't come to Elk Grove. So that put- situations didn't come to Elk Grove. So, that put in place for that section there. With these items addressed and stuff, the village can rest assured we're in solid position when it comes to dealing with that situation in the future. I know people asked us about, you know, like Rosemont, Schaumburg passed an extra fee for long-term stays. That is something we're looking at. And not so much for this issue, for other issues we have going on. Right now, we have an extended stay here in Elk Grove that actually has bus stops and its parking lot. I'll say that again. It has bus stops and its parking lot. That means in one-room hotel rooms, you have families living there with kids going to our schools. I'm not sure about you, but I was worried about single men staying in a hotel room too long, getting squirrely. Can you imagine housing a family in one-room hotel room, growing up there, living there as a housing, and going to school? It's not right. Not right for everyone involved. So, we will be looking at that as a potential way to do it. But, again, I don't mean to go on too long, I apologize. But my parents, both sides, came through Ellis Island. The story is, my family, my name's not Johnson, it was Johansson. When they came through Ellis Island, his name, Johansson, Johnson, you're through. There's a system that worked for 200 years in this country. Our families, most people here have gone through that. They've got to fix this. We should not be wasting our time, our money, and effort to fix something like that, and we won't. We're going to protect the health and safety, welfare of the people we are elected to protect and serve. We're doing that. We've done it. Mr. Nikabak, I again want to thank you very much for the work you did. I know I was on your back a lot, and every time something new popped up, I'm on you, gotta get going, let's go, get it done, get it done. We've done it, and I want to thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Last, the last item tonight is, I'm going to read a statement tonight. And I know everyone knows I like speaking, talking. Trusty Frank Terry, I like talking a lot. They don't call me a little windy for nothing. But anyways, this issue is a serious issue. And just for the press that's here tonight, this issue, I'm going to read a statement. We'll not say anything more at this time besides the statement. In advance, I'll let both Tom and Chris know, I will not be answering questions, nor will the board, any further than on the statement I'm about to read tonight. We will be giving you copies of this after the board meeting. I'm providing a brief update on the use of force incident involving the Elk Grove Village police officers that occurred on December 1st, 2023. First, on behalf of Elk Grove Village, I want to once again extend our sincere condolences to the Murray family as they grieve their loss. Over the years, the village has placed a priority on ensuring that Elk Grove Village police officers have the resources and training they need to respond to a variety of situations presented to them on a daily basis. The Elk Grove Village police officers who responded to the incident on Friday, December 1st, had a combination of crisis intervention team training, mental health training, and de-escalation training, all of which were utilized during the response to this incident. While we are, while there are ongoing investigations into this incident, we can share some details to address some of the questions we have received from the community. In response to the 911 call, Elk Grove Village police officers were dispatched to a particular residence on Fern Drive for a man with a knife. Responding officers attempted to keep Mr. Jack Murray in the house by providing instructions via the 911 caller-taker, who relayed those instructions to the individual inside the residence. Mr. Jack Murray exited the residence. Our officers were staged several houses away. Mr. Jack Murray advanced toward our officers while holding a knife approximately 11 and 1/2 inches in length. As he continued to advance toward the officers, Mr. Jack Murray ignored numerous commands to put the knife down, and numerous commands to put his hands up. As Mr. Jack Murray came close proximity to our police officers, they deployed a taser on Mr. Jack Murray as a least, as a less lethal option. After the taser was deployed, he continued to advance toward the officers and was still holding the knife at the time lethal force was applied. Officers started first aid and emergency lifesaving measures until the paramedics took over. This is all the information we can share with you at this time. The village understands and respects the desire for information and transparency from the community to better understand the events that took place. We will share the audio from the 911 dispatch, as well as the audio and video footage from the officers' body worn cameras and the police vehicle cameras as soon as we can. On behalf of the village board and myself, I want to once again extend our condolences to the Murray family. I also want to extend our thoughts and supports to the members of the Elk Grove Village Police Department involved in this tragic incident, as well as to all our employees who respond to calls for service and endeavor to protect our community on a daily basis. Thank you. With that complete, we have a couple, we have a presentation, and also some swearing in. So, excuse me. I'd like to ask Donna and Bob to come down and join me. Anyone that came to the board meeting tonight saw that beautiful tree outside. Okay. Saw that beautiful tree outside. Over the years, we've been fortunate to have residents in the village donate trees that we can enjoy for a tree lighting ceremony and all the holiday season. And we always like to recognize a fan that donates a tree. We invite them up on stage. We recognize all this. I take full responsibility, and I apologize tonight to Bob and Donna, there was a mix-up on the night of the tree lighting. We're not able to thank them. They were there. They came. Again, mix-up. I apologize for that. So, I wanted to first invite them tonight to come to the board meeting. We've got a couple of, thank you guests, for both of you, for the tree and all that. And, again, it's gorgeous. It's one of the biggest we had. It's full all the way around. I remember going out in July, looking at there. They live on Mississippi, and looking at the tree, and we knew right away that's the one we wanted. And we can't thank enough. It's added a lot to the holidays. People out there taking pictures, and the sleigh and all that. So, we want a chance to let you be in front of the people watching. Just so you know, about 3 billion people watch our board meetings every Tuesday night. So, they're watching now. So, just so you know, a lot of looking at you. But we just wanted to invite you tonight and thank you like we wanted to do the night of tree lighting. And, again, can't thank you enough. So, I was wondering, Bob or Donna, what do you want to say? A couple words? Why, talk about the tree a little bit. Go ahead.
We moved to this great community 27 years ago. And we have four kids in four and a half years, and the girls wanted to put a tree there to decorate. So, we got a little tree, 3 and 1/2 feet. It's called a Thad Albert tree. It's supposed to be 8 feet wide and 15 feet tall. Well, something didn't quite go right. And here we go with this tree. It has served its purpose. It's seen a lot over the years. It observed a house fire we had many years ago, and it's been there for our family, for the community, and it just sits perfectly in the winter wonderland that you have over there. And I'll tell you one other thing, too. My youngest daughter is a policewoman in Tulsa, and it means a lot to hear what you've had to deal with over here, and to the police that protect this community and all communities. So, I thank you again, and thank you for everything. It's our honor to have this tree for you.
Let your daughter know that we do give a bonus for transferred police officers. So, if she wants to come back to Elk Grove, we got, we got some openings still. We're more than welcome her back. So...
She can get the winters to go away.
Well, so far, not going to. We haven't had too bad of ones. So, but we'll see. But, again, thank you. And, again, I do apologize for the mix-up that occurred. And we thank you for your being such good nature and supporting the community. It means a lot.
It means our honor. Take care.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Next, as Pastor kind of stole some of my thunder tonight with the next things we got going on. But why don't we first, Butch, you want to come join me down here? Come on down, Butch. I see Mrs. Golds is sitting out there. My whole life, she saw me grow up as a little one on Briarwood all the way through. So, we'll be getting to Russ soon in a minute. But, Butch, come on down here, buddy. Oh, that's good. I already broke this. We'll fix it. Don't worry. I have said for years, all the years I've worked here, been mayor, we've got a lot of boards and commissioners that serve this community. We have the Plan Commission, the Zoning Board, Youth Committee, all kinds that work this community. There's no one that works any harder, any longer, yet in almost complete obscurity than what Butch, and Steve, who's here, and Russ is going to be here. I'm not going to try to scare Russ off. No one puts in the time and effort that they do. And what is that? They're responsible for hiring every policeman and fireman we have here in this community. And especially now, with changeover and all the things going on, it's even more demanding on them. But we've got the best people. I've said this forever. We've got the best people working in Elk Grove, whether it's Public Works, the fire, the police. We got phenomenal people working in the community, Managers Office Department. And these folks hired them all. I mean, you're talking a lot of policemen, a lot of firemen over the years. And it's not just one meeting. You have testing. Then you have more testing. Then you have interviews. You have follow-up interviews, final interviews. I mean, and you're talking hours and hours and hours of time. And we've been very blessed to have some great people serve over the years. Reginald's old, Gail Batner, Doc Shapiro, and Goldsmith. And Bob Goldsmith, and now Butch, and we have Mike Conkey, and then, and now Steve Sholton. And, you know, we're very fortunate. It's amazing how long each one stays. It's not like they're on a commission for five, six years. I mean, 20 years now for Butch. Doc was on for 40 years or something like that. I mean, yeah. And so, we're very fortunate. But, again, Butch is going to be stepping down. Butch has been the chairman for a number of years here, eight, nine years now, I think. Yeah. So, moving on, and we thank him for that. Butch used to work for Displanes.
Yes, I did.
For a long time. So, we're here tonight to, one, first thank Butch for his time and effort and all that, with a proclamation. And if I can, I'd like to read it tonight. A proclamation honoring Elroy Butch Erky. Elroy Butch Erky. Honors retirement as chairman of the Fire and Police Commission. Whereas Butch Erky was appointed to the Fire and Police Commission on August 12, 2003. I didn't have great hair back then. And whereas Butch became chairman of the Fire and Police Commission on June 16, 2015. And whereas the Police and Fire Commission handles all promotions, discipline, and hiring of firefighters and police officer. And Butch's longevity of 20-year volunteer is certainly one of his strengths. And whereas, over the course of Butch's 20 years of volunteering in Elk Grove Village, he's helped hire 183 firefighters and police officers, along with 69 promotions during his tenure. Whereas Butch is a good judge of character and people, and does well in selecting good candidates for fire and police positions for the village. And whereas Butch is open-minded, and despite his tough exterior, he is willing to listen, reason, and be flexible. Firm but flexible. Whereas Butch is always persistent to make sure that things will get done. Whereas Butch is truly a good heart and very generous and supportive charity organization. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Craig B. Johnson, the Board of Trustees, and the Village of Elk Grove, and the Council of Cook and Dubage, who hereby proclaim, December 12, 2023, is Butch Erky Day in the Village of Elk Grove. The village thanks Butch for 20 years of dedicated volunteer work to the hands of police and fire departments. Now, Butch, that means you've got about 4 hours and 15 minutes to whatever the hell you want to. They can't do anything to you. And stuff like that. But, again, not just hiring, I forgot about the promotions, the discipline, a lot. So, Butch, on behalf of the village, we say thank you. I got to fix this. We'll get it fixed for you. We say thank you, my friend.
Jeff, I won't take this long. Well, this is a record. I had somebody pray for me tonight. That's a big one. And then I get recognized by the village that I love. So, better slice. That's all I can tell you. Thank you very much.
There you go, my friend. Okay. As with someone's retiring, stepping down, we need a replacement. So, I'd like to ask Steve Sholton. Steve, if you want to come join me? So, may I remember Mr. Sholton? Steve's been part of this community. Actually, his first house was in the park, behind the park, in the park, behind the park, behind my house on Woodcrest, right? Woodcrest, I grew up on Briarwood, where Mrs. Golds still lives. So, Steve has been a longtime part of this community. Worked for the Elk Grove Partridge for a number of years. Then he ran, he was director of Partridge for Bloomingdale, then finished up at Arlington Heights. Definitely our loss. And, but he did give back to the community. He's been on Police and Fire Commission now for a while. And he would make an ideal chairman to refill Butch's shoes. That's only, I think, the fourth chairman now, because we had Gail, Doc, Butch, and now Steve. So, in our, almost getting close to 70-year village, this will only be our fourth Police and Fire Chairman. So, Steve, it's quite an honor. I appreciate taking time. Like to swear in if I could. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Steve Sholton.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Chairman of the Police and Fire Commission.
Chairman of the Police and Fire Commission.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Chairman of Police and Fire Commission.
Chairman of Police and Fire Commission.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
67 years ago tomorrow, my family moved into Elk Grove. And it was the best thing that ever happened to me and ever happened to my family. I'm very honored to be on the Police and Fire Commission. I've been on for a little over seven years. I don't know how I'm going to follow Butch. He's been a great friend and an advocate for the village, and we have an outstanding police department and an outstanding fire department because of his work and the work that have gone before me. So, it's an honor, and I will carry on as best I can. Thank you.
Thanks. Take care. Okay. Now, with all this switched around, we now have to fill a replacement spot. So, I'd like to ask Russ Golds to come on down. To say I've known Russ all my life would be a true statement. His mom's still on Briarwood Lane. Briarwood Lane is one of the very first streets in Elk Grove Village. They go way back. And actually, you're on Wildwood now, right?
Yes.
On Wildwood, one of the first, you know, areas. It goes way back. Russ, I think, was across the street, about three doors down the other side, where Mrs. Golds still lives. And it's nice that he's willing to step up and give back to the community. Russ was a fireman, Displanes?
Well, no.
Well, no, for 30 years?
30 years, full-time. 30, 3 years as a paid-on-call.
So, 30 years, full-time firefighter, 3 years paid on time, or paid on call. And so, he brings some expertise to the position, which we haven't had before. Steve knows personnel, been in administration positions with the Partridges and all that. Butch worked over at Displanes. Batner was a pharmacist. Doc was a dentist. Goldsmith used to work in a pharmacy, I know, because that's how my dad met him, down in Chicago. He was right by the apartment they were in. So, it's nice to now get perspective of someone on the commission that understands firsthand police and fire work. And he's been out of it long enough. In a different town, there's no tie. So, it's really a perfect marriage for this village. And that's why, when I called him and talked about it, he... And that's why when I called him and talked about it, he, and I was very grateful he's willing to give the time. Because I said before, as they'll tell you, it's a lot of time. Don't run away now, you're in. So, and we're glad he's willing to do it, and his family's excited. Who do you have here today, Russ, with you?
I've got my wife Judy.
Ray J.
Next to her is my granddaughter Haley.
Haley.
My grandson Colton.
Colton.
And then my mom Lois.
And Mrs. Gold.
Behind is my stepson Don, and my very lovely, his girlfriend Kayla.
Kayla, hello. Don't forget, I'll give him plenty of chocolates fall of you, so don't worry, you'll be fine. So we're grateful, Russ, that you're willing to do that. See, I gotta be careful. When he was a kid, we used to call him Rusty, because his dad's name is? Rust. So instead of Junior, so we call him Rusty. So I gotta be careful, that's why I think a little bit before I say Russ. So if you could, raise your right hand, and you don't hear that name very often anymore, do you?
No.
No. I was old timers. Repeat after me, please. I state your name.
I, Russ Gold, Jr.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Police and Fire Commission.
Police and Fire Commission.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
And the Counties of Cook and DuPage.
And the Counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Police and Fire Commission.
Police and Fire Commission.
As Craig said, I've got a little bit of, I don't know if it's expertise, but a little knowledge as far as what it takes to be a public servant. And I've had friends along the way that have been policemen, so it's not just the fireside, but I do know the police side. There's, there's two things that you need. You need to have a head for it, and more important, you need to have a heart for it. So hopefully, I'll be able to impart those things with the people that are applying for the positions here, and be able to keep the, the expertise and the excellent record that the police and fire have in this town. And hopefully, we'll be able to keep that, and Butch will miss you.
Come on up. All your grandkids, come on up. All your grandkids, come on up. Come on up. I'm gonna give you the chocolates, not your grandpa. Come on. Come on up. Give that to you. Hang on.
Oh, boy.
I'll say, ladies first. You're welcome. Okay, buddy, don't worry. Boy, you look like a goldfish. Oh, my gosh. There you go. Okay, enjoy.
Craig?
Okay, you folks are here for presentations. If you want to go, you're more than welcome to go now. We thank you for coming tonight. Have a Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday. Thanks again. Bye, Mrs. Gold. You know, Miss Gold, hang on.
Give her some chocolates.
Greg, I'm sending them to your house, and they're gonna be bad.
Miss Gold, I'm sorry, these grandkids got all chocolate. Make sure you grab them. Make sure you get a chocolate for the grandkid. I'm all out. Oh, wait, we got one. I'm sorry, God, I can't do that.
What a terrible, terrible mayor.
Oh, there you go.
She's good.
She got some more chocolate.
Okay. Okay, with that said, we move on to trustees' report. Trustee Joe Bush.
So over the past several weeks, students from the Elk Grove High School Leadership Through Service class have been out raking leaves, doing community lawn care work for senior citizens and those with disabilities. Finished up our last house last Sunday, right before the final leaf collection. So Colby, thank you for extending that another week. It was, I mean, I've never seen so many leaves in my life, and it took about 15 of us to, to do it. But it's a good opportunity for our students to work with the elderly, work with those who have disabilities, and good, good time for everybody, so. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Miller.
No report.
Trustee Frankie.
No report.
Just a little report.
Trustee Prochno.
Just a little one, just a reminder that the winter's farmer's market is open, and it will be open this Saturday at the Christus Victor Church from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The winter market runs every other Saturday, so we're getting into a pattern. Stop by and see some of the wonderful things that they have for sale. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Schmidt.
Just two short items. You mentioned the student exchange program. That was the first part of it. The second part of the program will start after the first year, where we will be meeting again with our students, that hosted students at Elk Grove High School. They're going to be going over to our sister city in Sicily during the spring break, so we'll work on that. And today, I attended the Stevenson Dare graduation. Prosperantly, 60 students graduated. It was a typical dare graduation, a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of fun, and everybody had a good time. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Jared.
A week ago, I attended grand opening of Shumi USA. It's a Taiwanese company that chose to make their inaugural manufacturing debut here in Elk Grove Village. It was between us and Texas. And I got a wonderful goody bag full of dental products. They make dental products, and their CEO from Taiwan came, and it was just really cool to see an Asian manufacturing company coming to Elk Grove. And they hope to do, to grow and expand and do more production here. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We move on now to accounts payable warrant. We have two of them. First one, November 30th, 2023.
I move that we approve the accounts payable warrant for November 30th, 2023, in the amount of $8,310,934.40.
Second?
We have motion by trustee Prochno, or I'm sorry, motion by trustee Prochno, second by trustee Miller. Jen, can you call the vote, please?
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Jerish?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Prochno?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Bush?
Aye.
Motion passes six to nothing. We have December 12th, 2023.
I move that we approve the accounts payable warrant for December 12th, 2023, in the amount of $708,190.21.
Second?
Motion by trustee Prochno, second by trustee Miller. Without objection, record the votes, please demonstrate, six to nothing. We have considered agenda tonight. Items A is an almighty, because of the holiday season coming up, the almighty. Through S, a gentleman that's not going to be seeing you, Mr. Nekabaka, but he'll definitely be seeing me. Santa? Santa! So I need a motion to approve?
Second.
We have an emotion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Jerish. Any questions, comments from any staff or elected officials attending the consent agenda? Seeing none? Any of the audience on the consent agenda items? Seeing none, hearing none, and without objection, record the vote, as please demonstrated, six to nothing. We now move on to, bear with me, regular agenda, there's no items. Plan Commission, Mr. Wone, is there something, or no? We can go now?
I got a couple items.
Oh, come on, okay.
All right. So item A, PC Dock at 23-9, that was actually item L on the consent agenda that you approved. Item B is PC Dock at 23-10. On November 13th, the Plan Commission met to hear PC Dock at 23-10 to consider the petition for rezoning and special use permit for a plan unit development and resubdivision for property located at the southeast corner of Arlington Heights Road and Higgins Road. It was the consensus of the Plan Commission by an ADO vote to approve the rezoning of the property from B3 to an underlying zoning of B1 for the commercial property and A2 for the residential property. Approved the special use for a plan unit development and approval of the Elk Grove Woods Plaza Development Regulations, and approved the plat of subdivision from three lots to two. And the petitioner is in the audience.
To the petitioner, we decided we don't want to do it. Let's, you know, just try to see what happens. We're, no, we're good. Wingspan has been phenomenal to work with, to say the least. They, I know, worked very hard. I mentioned earlier that we have all the contracts signed up, leases set to go, and there's a lot of work and effort by you folks. We thank you for that effort. We're excited about it. And I know Nick says he's going to be working hard and quick, so you got a timeframe now to get it done by. We're gonna hold it. Any questions or comments from any board member tonight for the petitioner? Yeah, and with the vote coming up, trustee Jerish will be abstaining. I mean, pretty obvious why, so that'll be fine. So I need a motion to have the attorney prepare necessary documents.
So moved.
We have motion by trustee?
Bush, not fighter.
I didn't say it. I was waiting for Jen, but trustee Bush, second by?
Second.
By trustee Miller. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record show two things. Nance approval and abstention from trustee Jerish. So again, what's going to happen, guys? You find a list. It's going to be on the agenda in January. You do not need to return. It passed unanimously by the Plan Commission, passed unanimously by this village board. It's a mere formality. I do want to thank you. I'm seriously, this is a big undertaking for the village, I know for you folks, and we're excited. We appreciate your hard work, your effort, and we're looking forward to everything coming to fruition, and we thank you for working with Elk Grove. You know, you guys can work a lot of places, you chose a village. We appreciate it. So despite Nick, we still thank you. So, thanks again. Okay, anything else, Mr.?
Yes, I do have one other item. On December 4th, the Plan Commission met to hear PC Dock at 23-11 to consider the petition for a special use permit for a portion of a building to be used as a martial arts studio at the property located at 1651 Lively Boulevard. It was the consensus of the Plan Commission by an ADO vote to grant the special use with conditions as outlined in the finding of fact.
Okay, petitioner here tonight. Okay. First, I need a motion to have the attorney prepare necessary documents.
So moved.
We have motion by trustee Frankie?
Second.
She was abstaining the last one.
Okay, second by trustee Jerish. Any questions, comments from board members to the petitioner? None? Seeing none? I'll still have, oh. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Let the record show an ass approval. Again, same thing with you. You do not need to return next board meeting. It'd be the unconscion agenda, mere formality. So we thank you for working with the village. You're set to go, and I wish I had more chocolates. He's got a little one sitting all this time. Hang on, before you go, she'll make sure your young one gets some chocolate. Okay? Oh, by all means, go ahead. Now, remember, we passed it, so.
Conditions are that the ADO planning development put on it. The one thing that I did want to state is that I wanted to make sure there was not a me-hit-by-the-bus condition put on the property. In other words, they had asked that the condition for the special use would only last as long as I owned the building. I asked that I make sure that my successors also have that right, because if I am hit by a bus before the two gentlemen that will be running this martial arts studio finish their duties, which are to train people for the 2028 Olympics and beyond, that they continue their mandate as long as my family still owns the property. My family owns three buildings in this village. My grandfather, as some of you may know, was, actually, I just saw a trophy that was given to him as the leader of the Centex Industrial Park in 1964, in honor of five years of service. So we've been here a while. We're soon to purchase another building, maybe even two buildings in the village. Just want to make sure that we have that continuity.
Is that in there?
It's for the, it's for the business name.
So we're good.
So the special use applies to the business name as it will remain.
Wonderful. So in case my daughter wants to continue it and I'm hit by a bus, unfortunately.
She's good. Don't get hit by a bus. But in case you do, yeah.
Well, you know, there are a lot of business people that talk about getting hit by a bus. They're being happy to have the right people on a bus.
You have nothing to worry about. We got you covered. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. And when you're going, Jen right back there has got your daughter some special treats.
Wonderful, I'll make her worth her time.
Okay, you're all good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. God bless. Thank you.
Good luck.
Anything else, Mr. Wone?
That is it.
Okay. We move on now, nothing on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Move on now to Recycling and Waste Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
Yes, December 15th is the last day to deposit leaves in the dumpsters at the two Public Works facilities. So try to get them there before you get hit by a bus. And, a lot of buses. So 15th, last day, the dumpsters are leaving. We're also being told by other trustees that people are still putting leaves in the street. We're not coming to get them, so they'll be plowed back into your parkway once the snow comes. So if you have to store them somewhere, or get them into the dumpster at the park, or at the Public Works facilities, or store them until next year, Waste Management is not picking up any more recycling this year. So that, and also, if you're like me, and you always have all these lights that don't work, after you put them up, we are taking the old Christmas lights here at the Village Hall. We'll be taking them for the next couple of months. So if you've got strings that aren't working, don't throw them in the garbage. They can be recycled, bring them in the Village Hall. We have a big container that you can put them in. So that'll be happening for the next couple of months, especially after you take your broken lights off your house. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Judiciary, Plan, Zoning Committee, trustee Prochno.
No report.
Capital Improvement Committee, trustee Schmidt.
No report.
Cable Intelligence Committee, trustee Jerish.
No report.
See how good I'm doing in that? I don't even think trash anymore. It's always cherished now, it just comes natural. Youth Committee, trustee Bush.
No report.
Information Committee, trustee Miller.
So I do have a little? Report, sorry. I had no report earlier. Is this still a special mailbox for the North Pole for parents and children who want to write a letter? You have until Sunday, December 17th, to write the letter to the North Pole, but make sure you put a return address on your letter, so.
And they all get a response?
They do, even if you have been naughty or nice. I'm sorry, I'm not looking at anybody in particular.
He's an attorney. It's a given. I mean, what do you? Does he get a response, or just cold? Well, it depends. May not be Santa that responds back to him, but we won't.
And then the last thing I just want to say is, the Village Newsletter will be coming out shortly, hopefully next week, so be on the lookout for that. Thank you very much. That ends my report.
Thank you. Business Leaders Forum, trustee Schmidt.
No report.
Health and Community Services, trustee Prochno.
No report.
Personnel Committee, trustee Schmidt.
No report.
Airport update, we already went through. Parade, our next meeting's not until February, but I do get to announce tonight, because the way the competition falls for bands, Elk Grove High School band has already committed to being a parade this year, so we're excited about that. We should get other bands now that were not the same weekend, so we'll see what happens. We've reached out to Conan High School, waiting to hear back from them. So anyone that knows people at Conan, put a little pressure on them to commit, so we have both Elk Grove High School and Conan, it'd be great. Mr. Nekabaka, on our agenda tonight, we passed a rather substantial contract for a midsummer concert classic series. And this is the first time you're going to need to name all five bands. So let's start off with band number three, which is playing at Rotary Fest.
Neon Trees.
Holy cows, impressive. Name the number one?
What's the excitement on there?
Name, name, name the number one hit.
Neon Trees.
Hang on. Name the number one hit. I figured, okay.
It has a word that he loves to do best.
Yes, not do best, does.
Okay, band number five, our last concert for the year, would you be at the Town Center July 30th?
I recognize him. Bret Michaels?
Very good. Band number two, would you be at the first one here at the Town Center on July 9th?
I've actually seen her. I've actually seen her in concert, Martina McBride.
Very good, band number four, which will be the twenty-third at the Town Center.
Actually, I've seen them too, but that was about sixty years ago.
And that is?
The Four Tops.
Very good, I say the easiest one, and probably the biggest show, we think this may set records, on July fourth, it will be at Rotary Fest Green, part of our Fourth of July fireworks spectacular afterwards, they are one of the three most iconic bands of all time, and that would be?
Is it Beach Boy, or is it Beach Boys?
Beach Boys.
Beach Boys.
I know Mike Love is the main guy there still, but I'm not sure, well, we won't go there, so you got a very, Mr. Nikabaka, I am impressed.
As will you should.
You lost money on the number one hit, Neon Trees, but?
What is the number one hit?
I have no clue.
Everybody's talking?
Everybody talks.
Everybody talks?
Yeah, everyone is talking, I know, they shouldn't be, but they do.
Well, it's like your report, everyone talks.
No offense, if they walked in and out, wouldn't know who they were, so, but the younger people want them, we're now trying to spread our, so we got now young band, we have iconic band, we have a.
Old band.
Woman band, a women band, we've got a, what, Four Tops, they say, they're not.
Classic.
Classic, yeah, classic band, and we finish up with true rock and roll, with Bret Michaels, so we've covered the whole spectrum in this year's lineup, which is our biggest lineup ever, no question, so that went well, and very good, I'm impressed, Georgie, ready to go, good job. Okay, Special Events Committee, we already talked about the tree lighting, our next one is, believe it or not, trustee Prochno? Memorial Day. That's next one, right on the corner, so that, no report, liquor commission, what we've all been waiting for, right, Mr. Nikabaka, report from our beloved village manager?
No report.
Was that concise and good?
It was, I see the point.
I thought, wait, no mix-up, words clear, succinct?
Yes. That's the right word, yeah.
That's why he's the boss, that's why, good job, and now, y'all listen, village clerk.
No report.
Yeah, yeah. Any unfinished business, Mr. Nikabaka? I see none as usual, nothing down there?
Good.
Okay, new business items from trustees, nothing?
Just wishing everybody a happy holiday, a safe, happy holiday.
A Merry Christmas, too.
Merry Christmas, I think everybody, we all agree on that, don't we?
Yep, Jane Gregor here, do you want me to just mention it, or you want to come down? Okay.
Jane, did you bring parking permit? Okay, thanks.
Jane Gregor is one put together Reefs Across America, how many years, this our third year? Fifth year, it's on this Saturday, December sixteenth, ten AM sharp, at the Elk Grove Cemetery, right there on Arlington Road by the tollway, and we ask you please park in Chase Bank parking lot, we have a shuttle bus that will run between, someone very nicely donated for that, so that worked out good, and it's a way to honor those that have paid the sacrifice on our behalfs and first responders, so both military and first responders, we recognize that day, so again, ten o'clock, it's called Reefs Across America, I see on TV, what news channel has commercials all the time, Fox News has commercial all the time about the Reefs Across America, so it's out there, so she's worked very hard putting this together, has daughters of the American Revolution, and so if you can't be there this Saturday, December sixteenth, ten AM, sharp, right, Mr. Nikabaka?
Yep.
We have two Revolutionary War veterans, now you served with one of them, I know, I wasn't sure about the second one, but one, you did minor, I think, yep, so, good guy? Okay.
You owe them some money.
Okay, so we got that, does anybody else wish to address the board tonight before we adjourn? If not, we thank everyone for being here, again, sorry for the length of marriage report, I cannot believe what has happened the last thirty days, we're now moving forward, I want to wish everyone a very happy holiday, a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we'll see y'all in twenty twenty-four, right?
We'll be here.
Okay, need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a motion by trustee Miller, need one this time, second by trustee Frankie, Jen, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Prochno?
Hello?
Yes.
Do you know what you're voting for?
Yes.
It's to give the mayor a five million dollar a year salary, you said you have?
Sorry, my bad.
Go ahead.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Bush?
Aye.
Trustee Frankie?
Yes.
Trustee Jarish?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six nothing, folks, enjoy the holidays, God bless everyone, meeting adjourned.